All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 27th. It is 7:04 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following Town Council members are present in chambers. First electman, Maurer, Formacella, O'Rourke, Wales, and Diva. The following Town Council members absent, in a repelance. I have not seen Kevin Reed log on, but as soon as he comes on, we will note his attendance. But as right now, he's absent, but I believe that is likely to change. All right, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. If there are no objections, hearing no objections, I'm passing consent calendar as presented. I accept communication items A through O incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item five, public participation. We'll begin with those who are in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate? The takers. All right. Is there anyone on, Mr. First Electman, is there anyone online indicating that they would like to participate?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to close public participation then. We have two appointments this evening. All right, I'm going to move for the Town Council to adopt Resolution 25-064. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Mary Matera to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending October 21st, 2027. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Maurer. Mary Matera lives in Monroe, has lived in Monroe for most of her life. She holds a bachelor's degree in business from Southern Connecticut State College. She is currently employed with Heart Care Healthcare as a clinical data abstract coordinator. She's a certified EMT and volunteers countless hours for the Monroe Emergency Medical Services. For quite a few years, Mary has wished to be on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She knows the parks and the programs very well, having utilized them throughout her years here in town. Mary's husband and three boys have also participated in many parks and recreation programs. She's a longstanding player in the Women's Slow Pitch Softball League and is an avid tennis player. Among her other interests are golf, reading, bicycling, and hiking. Mary is a strong candidate for this position. She has been wanting to give back to the community on this commission for some time. She's worked closely with the commissioners in the past when there has been discussion underway regarding development of a field in town for lacrosse. One of her goals is to continue helping the commission to preserve one of our town's biggest assets, the parks. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, although it's in favor of adopting Resolution 25-064. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7 to 0, I believe. Is Matera's here? So would you, would you like to come down and be sworn in?
Mary, do you solemnly swear and solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a park and rec commissioner to the best of your ability so, if you got, or upon penalty of perjury?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
If you stick around before you leave, I'll grab it out of my office and give it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll find you. Can we do what you crank and then you can give it to us? Okay, perfect, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do for the town.
We have one more appointment this evening, Resolution 25-065. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-065. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Jonathan Richer to the Conservation and Water Resources Commission for a term ending December 5th, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion. Jonathan has lived in Monroe for 11 years. He holds a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Bucknell University and currently works for Tie &amp; Bond Inc. in the area he majored. Jonathan has worked in the field of civil engineering and construction for almost 25 years, is a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Volunteering is a passion of Jonathan's, and as such, he has dedicated his time in a variety of youth coaching positions from Monroe Little League, Parks and Recreation Basketball, and AYSO for his two children. Now that his sons have moved into interdisciplinary sports, he's looking for a new way that he can volunteer and help the town that has become their home. A position in this commission would align with Jonathan's professional background in his area of expertise, as well as his wish to give back to his community. He's an excellent candidate for this opening. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, although it's in favor of adopting Resolution 25-065. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7 to 0. I don't believe he is here this evening. I do not see him, so he will be sworn in at a different time. Moving on to item seven, our action items. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. There was no update from Vice Chair on this matter. Was there anything from anyone else on that commission?
There's been no meetings since the last council meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Town Council Committee on Plan Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Duba, anything?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Command Legislative and Administrative Matters. I see Councilmember Reed has arrived. It is 7:11. If the first selectman can let him in so that he can participate.
Be good to go.
All right, Kevin, can you?
I think so, right? You can hear me?
Perfect, and you arrived just in time for the LNA update.
Yes, I appreciate it. Sorry for being late. My apologies to everybody. We did have a meeting tonight. We discussed six matters. That will be before you, the WMNR FY26 Proposed Budget, the Batumis Concrete Road Paving Agreement, Police Chief Employment Agreement, the VEMS Agreement, exemption of municipal property from zoning regulations, extension, and conveyance abatement upon town-owned to the state of Connecticut, all reached concessions.
Thank you so much. No other discussion on LNA. Moving on to item D, Strategic Plan Committee. This evening, we did have a meeting regarding the Bearsley property with the historic society. And we discussed some larger scale plans regarding the Bearsley House and the property and the use of that property. Included in that discussion was the current and future vision of the property, as well as the future ownership of the property and what the society's resources allow them to continue to do and what did not allow them to continue to do, including significant remediation of the physical building, which they own, but the town owns the property that the building is on. I believe that we will continue to have discussions regarding this building and its ownership and whether or not it is a good or not fit for the society to, in some way, transfer ownership of the building to the town, if the town would be interested in doing that. And so there will be further discussions in the future regarding the ownership of the building, as well as the stewardship of the land and its history. And so the society at this point will meet and they will come to a determination as to whether or not they wish to continue to own the building, and then they will report back to the Strategic Plan Committee. And at that point, when it's appropriate, it will be moved to Town Council for input from all our members at that time. Okay? That's it for our Strategic Plan Committee update. Moving on to item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item F, our first selectman's update. First selectman Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First in operations, MetroCog. The municipalities that make up Metropolitan Council of Government have filed as interveners on the PURA docket for the Aquarian Water Company sale to the Regional Water Authority. If the sale is approved, the new entity will operate outside of PURA oversight, which may affect the taxes and water rates paid by Monroe and 54 other municipalities across the state. I'll keep you updated on the progress of the docket hearing. MetroCog will be paying for that, and also, just so you know, there's a pilot program with PURA, but they're claiming that the taxes will stay the same, they will pay the same taxes, but we know if they are a quasi, they are a quasi-government agency, RWA, which is trying to take over Aquarian and turn it into an AWA, Aquarian Water Association, or something along those lines, we run the risk of losing about $800,000 in tax revenue to the town of Monroe. So MetroCog filed intervenor status, and I'll let you know how that evolves. Gusky Pond. Gusky Pond on Huntington Road. Work on Gusky Pond has begun after approvals through FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, deep in our local inland wetlands were received. This area was heavily impacted by the Thousand Year Flood, destroying an existing dam and flooding into our neighboring Newtown Residence property. This work will stabilize water levels once again in the pond, which is located on Huntington Road. Wolf Park Concessions. Our Wolf Park Pool opened over Memorial Day weekend, and we are pleased to announce that there will be a vendor at the pool concessions, as well as certain park events and concert series. Peggy's Canteen will be serving a variety of options, from sandwiches, salads, items on the grill, and sweet treats. Peggy Lewis has been in the catering business for 35 years and is a food service employee at the Southport School. She was a concessionaire at the Pine Wood Lake Association in the summer of '22 and '23. We are thrilled to found a concessionaire for this season and hope for a long-lasting partnership with her for our residents. Emergency Services Update. National Police Week. State Representative Tony Scott, State Senator Jason Perillo, and I stopped by the Police Department during National Police Week. During National Police Week, we honor the dedication, courage, and integrity of our law enforcement officers, from protecting our communities to upholding excellence in policing. Thank you for your continued commitment and service. In our Community Update, Barnum Festival Ringmasters Ball. I attended a Barnum Festival Ringmasters Ball. It was a wonderful event with Greg Napp being this year's ringmaster. The Barnum Festival will be here this upcoming weekend on May 30th and 31st for a night of music and food truck festival, as well as a car show on May 31st. Connecticut Living World War II Veterans Recognition Ceremony. On May 19th, I attended, along with our Town Clerk Vita Stone, a ceremony in partnership with Connecticut veterans and the Connecticut National Guard that honored our living World War II veterans. This ceremony was held in Hartford at the State Armory. It was a day of honoring the incredible individuals who served and sacrificed for our great country. And finally, the Memorial Day Parade. The annual Memorial Day Parade was this past Sunday. Thank you to Vita Stone, the Parade Committee Cert, Monroe Police Department, Monroe Fire Department, as well as Paul Moise, who organizes the annual Mile Down the Pike Run. Thank you to Department of Public Works for the amazing preparation done, and Barb Thomas for the wonderful planning, skidding Town Hall, much more elegance during our traditional ceremonies. In attendance were many local officials, including State Senator Jason Perillo, State Representative Tony Scott, and United States Senator Richard Blumenthal. Several organizations marched with banners and instruments proudly in remembrance of our fallen heroes. A special thank you to all of those organizations as well. It was great watching our town services on display and friendly faces from our community staring as a flyover was done by a local pilot in a helicopter. While all of us enjoyed the parade, the ceremony was honorable and solemn. As presenter, Fire Marshal Will Dowden spoke on behalf of Monroe as the master of ceremonies. Sergeant Joseph J. Madar was recognized for his commitment to the Army Reserves, who served active duty in the 76th Division of the 385th Infantry for five and a half years. All presenters and residents attending paused to reflect on the courage, sacrifice, and selflessness of the men and women who gave their lives and service to our country. Let us never take for granted the freedoms we enjoy, and let us strive to live in a way that honors their legacy. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilmember O'Rourke?
Just a quick question. With regards to the first point with MetroCog, with MetroCog filing as an intervenor, they are trying to intervene on prohibiting the sale, or what is the status of their intervention?
So, as I understand it, the committee that's being formed is a 6-5 on the PURA end, and it doesn't give the municipalities that are affected a really real seat at the table. So the fight is just to have a seat at the table. I don't know if it's going to impact the sale, but to have a say on how they operate within our towns is pretty much the main goal of that intervenor status. Does that it? Is that?
We're good.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for action items this evening. We have no matters of unfinished business tonight. Moving on to item A, I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-066. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe Batumis Concrete Road Paving Agreement and any associated documents and change orders binding between the town of Monroe and Cochiola Paving, Inc. for road paving services during fiscal year '26. Be a further resolve that the Town Council waive Section 4.3 of the town's purchasing policy with respect to this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Maurer. Mr. First Electman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, we wish to utilize Cochiola Paving Incorporated for road paving services this year. I have provided for your review and consideration a new Batumis Concrete Road Paving Agreement. This agreement has been drafted by our town attorney, who has also provided an attached letter of an opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I just have one question, and that's...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is Section L referencing the CHRO exemption, limited exemption. I'm just curious if someone can explain to me what that exemption would be? That is on page 12. It is Section B compliance for L. I'm unfamiliar with that exemption, and I just wanted a little clarification.
What letter? I'm sorry, Councilman.
L.
L.
On page 12, and it's a reference to the CHRO state-funded street paving exemption for paving contract. And apparently, it's a thing. I just don't know what that thing is, and it always concerns me when I see a CHRO exemption.
First Electman?
So the CHRO is something that's involved in every RFP. The original RFP, Bill Phillips is here to answer any questions. I don't know if it was required during the original RFP when we started using Cochiola. If we want to table this and get more information from the town attorney on it. I know that Cochiola Paving is CHRO certified and does follow those rules.
I'm not arguing that. There's an exemption reference, and there is also a reference to what should have been an attachment, a certification. Not sure who prepares that certification, or where that's coming from. It's just my concern over any CHRO exemption, which apparently is standard, but I'd just like some clarification, if that's possible.
And the CHRO information is in all our RFPs at this point? We're continuing it?
I understand that. It's the exemption part that I'm asking about.
Oh, I understand. I don't have a, I would need a legal opinion on that, so it's up to you if you want to approve it pending a legal opinion or table it. Chairman, that's your call.
Any other discussion on this item?
Just, do we, when is our current contract through? Do we know that?
End of June.
End of June? Of, does it harm us in any way to get the opinion so that we have the answer and just vote it on it at the next meeting, table it to the next meeting? Is there any reason not to do that?
I would have to inquire if there's an issue.
If we table it to the next meeting, how will that impact?
Right, close. I mean, you know, I don't really see a major problem, but, yeah, okay. We still have all the due, the end of June.
Well, can we? Can I, maybe if we just, we can just table this discussion and see if we can get Frank on immediately, or, and Frank can come on and we can move through other items of our agenda, and if this is not resolved by then, then we'll come up with a solution if we have to. All right. So I'm going to hold the vote on this, and we're going to move on to item B. Resolution 25-067. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-067. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Chief of Police Employment Agreement and any associated documents binding between Keith E. White for his employment as chief of police. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. First Electman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, the Board of Police Commissioners selected Keith White to be appointed Chief of Police for the town. The town attorney has reviewed the agreement and was proved by the Board of Police Commissioners during their meeting conducted May 21st, 2025, and has been provided a letter of opinion in this regard.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, although it's in favor of adopting Resolution 25-067. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 8 to 0. Moving on to item C, which is Resolution 25-068. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-068. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents binding between Valley Emergency Medical Services, Inc. for the provision of contracted EMS services. Be a further resolve that the Town Council waive Sections 4.2, 4.3, and 4.5 of the town's purchasing policy with respect to this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Maurer. Mr. First Electman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to point out my error of, instead of months, I wrote months, but that is meant to let the record show that that months needs to be changed to months. Our current agreement with Valley Emergency Medical Services is near expiration. The town attorney, EMS commission, EMS chief, and finance have worked diligently with VEMS for months, collaborating a new agreement. Both EMS Chief Craig Rosenberg and our EMS commission have recommended that we continue utilizing the service of Valley Emergency Medical Services. Our town attorney also provided a letter of opinion, and Mr. Rosenberg, Chief Rosenberg is here if you have any questions. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Maurer?
Only that this was discussed in LNA. Our chairman, Formacella, asked some great questions about, there had been previous concern about certain financial aspects of VEMS, and that was, our concerns were assuaged by Chief Rosenberg. They seem to be doing much better since a couple of switches they've made, including their billing company and things along those lines. So that may have answered those questions. The only other discussion was, I was very curious about the collaborating malls, and I still want to know if there's malls collaborating in town. I think, I think we should all know. So thank you for that, chief. And with that, I think it was unanimous through LNA.
Protection of our sweaters.
That's right. We all need to know.
Your mouthful. All right. Any other discussion on this item? I think everybody, Craig, you can speak to this. I think our service is very happy with the relationship.
Yeah, we are. They're a longtime vendor. They know the town. Equally important, they work really well with their volunteers for a hybrid service, and we have a lot of mixed crews. You have a paid person, a volunteer person, really never had an issue, they've never missed a shift with us that was supposed to be covered. So it's really a very attractive quality. We have some people that have been working here for 10 years, have been in the town of Monroe, it's part of them, so, kind of a good relationship.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, although it's in favor of adopting Resolution 25-068. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 8 to 0. Moving on to item E. First, I'm going to make a motion to waive the reading of Resolution 25-069. Is there a second?
Second.
Jason Maurer, any discussion on the waiving of the reading? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 8 to 0. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-069. Is there a second?
Second.
Jason Maurer. Mr. First Electman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On May 28th, 2024, Town Council approved Resolution Number 24-060, which temporarily exempted all town property from its own zoning regulations as authorized by Connecticut general statutes they point to for a period of one year through May 28th, which is tomorrow, 2025. Upon discussion with our Planning and Zoning Administrator, we would like to request to extend the municipal exemption through and including July 28th, 2025, to allow land use staff to complete and revise certain matters which rely upon the municipal exemption commenced but have not yet been completed. The attached resolution has been drafted for your consideration. This also came with opinion from the town attorney and our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Kathleen Gallagher, is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I'll start with Councilmember Maurer, because I'm sure he's going to talk about what happened in LNA.
Yeah.
No. To fill in from LNA is that some of the questions that may be answered, at LNA, we did discuss this. One, the rationale of the short-term extension is that there's a meeting, when is the meeting coming up?
Conservation.
For conservation?
I don't remember the exact date. It's the beginning of July.
So the conservation meeting is the beginning of July, and the town wanted their way in before concluding everything from the zoning side of things, which is why it's through the July 28th, just to get through to that conservation meeting. Because of that rationale, I did state that I have no issue with the short-term extension, but I did, that the selectman, and I believe the selectman agrees, that if they're going to come forward at the end of July with any request for an extension or for a permanent adoption, there are a couple of things that I would like to see, which are, one, how this has been used to date, if this has been used to date, and a little description of each time it has been used, and two, what the plans of utilizing this exemption going forward that presently exist are for, and the same kind of thing of what the projects are and a little bit description of those projects, so that we can make those determinations at that point. There was also discussion of, it may be the position of the town, and this is not committing the selectman to anything, but it may be the position of the town to let it run after that July date, and once that conservation meetings can add, and to not extend it at all. So we will see what happens in July, but I have no, I personally have no problem with the two month, provided that my support going forward would be conditioned on having those kinds of reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Maurer. I will just note that it does have a similar clause that we adopted earlier, that there is no automatic removal, excuse me, automatic renewal of this. It is the July 28th date. This is why it's being presented here, is because it expires tomorrow, and we need additional info from our boards and commission. Councilmember Kohut, I believe you had a raise?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concerns remain what they were when we passed it the first time, and I will reiterate them, assuming this passes again at the end of July, believing that there will be a request either for permanency or an extension. My question, however, is, I would be fairly certain that, and there were reasons for us passing it in the first place, are we fairly certain that this July date is the date that we actually need for the completion of those projects?
Can I just ask a quick follow-up to that, so we can give you an accurate answer? Do you mean, do you think we would need additional time past July?
Correct. That's what I'm asking, kind of in a roundabout way.
No problem. I don't know if the first selectman or... I don't know if the first selectmen or Kathleen would like to talk about that.
To my knowledge, that this will satisfy the needs of the land use operations, but if Kathleen wants to add, we'd love to hear it. And Kathleen, if you would just answer the question, Jason, Councilman Mauer, has this been used to date as how?
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and administrative for the town of Monroe. When we had first asked for this a year ago, it was mostly focused on the acquisition of the former St. Jude's property and our ability to do that in an efficient and timely manner. We have used it in one occasion up to this point, which was for the change of use to a potential community center. The exemption from our zoning regulations had to do with the parking calculations. When we have planned out that original property, we had enough parking for the entirety of the site, because we were utilizing the gravel space where the future septic system is supposed to go, because we would like to not park on that over the next couple of years while the septic system is still in the transition period from its existing location to that location. We exempted ourselves from our parking regulations, because we don't want to park on top of it. You have the potential to compromise the soils and compromise the septic system. So that allowed us to have that temporary time period. There is a shared parking agreement with St. Jude's, so that we have the ability to still create the amount of parking space that would be needed for any event, especially for large events. And then, once the septic system is installed, we can put either gravel or pavement, depending on what's needed at that time, and then park on it, and then we can do the parking calculations. So we did exempt ourselves from our parking requirements for the zoning regulations without going to the zoning board of appeals for that specific event. So that's the first time we used it. The second time we're looking to use it is now, which is when we acquired the former St. Jude's parcel. We needed a legal instrument in order to be able to purchase it for the town of Monroe, because we were creating an imaginary divide between the two parcels, the parcel we were looking to acquire and the existing parcel to remain. You have two options. You can either do a lot line adjustment, or you can do a subdivision. We weren't ready to do a subdivision at that time, so with the advice of Town Attorney Lito, we decided to do a lot line adjustment, and we put that portion, the area to be acquired, combined with the town of Monroe library parcel. And so we combined those two together, so that we acquired it. It could easily be acquired by the town of Monroe library parcel. Now, we're ready to subdivide the property. So we are subdividing it in a traditional way in accordance with our subdivision regulations, but what we are asking for is an exemption from coverage and landscape buffers for the town of Monroe library parcel, because we're just putting it back to what it was before, but it was pre-existing non-conforming. It does not meet the coverage calculations in the residential zone, and it doesn't meet the landscape buffer requirements. So that's the request for the exemption at the moment, is in order to exempt ourselves from landscaping buffer and from the coverage calculation, just so it can go back. We're not making it more non-conforming than it was before. We're just putting it back to what it was at the beginning. But technically, we would need a variance from the zoning board of appeals in order to do that, because we're subdividing it. It's a fresh look at the property. Those are the two items we have used and proposed to use it. Again, as mentioned, as part of the subdivision application, we do need input from all of the different disciplines, including the Conservation Water Resource Commission. They only meet once a month, so our timing just didn't work out related to that. Once we have that comments, we'll be able to do the final review on July 17. We are planning a zoning meeting next Thursday, so they'll already have a preliminary review. Any questions they have, we'll be able to work towards prior to that July 17 meeting, and we anticipate about that day. So we anticipate not needing additional exemption.
If I may ask, there's no intent to use it in any other way between now and then. Is that correct?
There's no intent to use it in any other way between now and then.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kohut. Councilmember Percival?
Yes, thank you. My questions were the details, which you answered, so thank you for that. And I'm fine with the extension. I just have questions and concerns if we do want to extend it beyond July. I don't like the precedent that we're keep doing this for future properties, so, but for now, I'm satisfied. Thank you for your detailed information.
Thank you, Councilmember Percival. So, Member O'Rourke?
Yeah, forgive me if I'm being redundant here, but I just wanted to reiterate or just make sure that I'm clear in my mind, and maybe the public, this will help clear up the public's mind, that the municipality exemption for the zoning regulations is only being extended to the community center, i.e., former St. Jude's property.
Yes.
And thus far, the two examples that you had mentioned with regards to actually utilizing these exemptions seem to be prudent and logical. So I would have a reservation with regards to further extension and potentially further extension as needed moving forward.
Council, thank you, Councilmember O'Rourke. Councilmember Juve?
As I recall, when we had that meeting, there was a number of concerned citizens, many not in favor of us doing that. I thought some of them didn't quite grasp, or perhaps didn't quite grasp what we were trying to do. I think my position that day, and it remains the same, is that this is a temporary thing, and were to be trying to become permanent, I would no longer be in support of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Mauer?
Just as a clarification, based off of Councilmember O'Rourke's comments, while it's being utilized for the purpose of the community center site, this is technically a blanket exemption for the town of Monroe for all municipal property as is required by the state.
That's correct, Councilmember Mauer. So we've been given assurances from planning zoning in our first select.
That is not our intent to use it that way, but it has to be that way by statute.
And Mr. Chair, just to reiterate one more time, the two examples that everyone has spoken about this evening only pertain or have affected the community center, formerly the St. Jude's property.
Yes. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-069, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to item E, resolution 25-070. I move the town council adopt resolution number 25-070. Resolve that the, oh, excuse me, resolve that the resolution entitled conveyance of easement upon town-owned property to state of Connecticut, copy of which is available at this meeting and wasn't included in the package of the meeting materials, is hereby approved and recommended for adoption by the town. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Selectman, discussion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Related for response to the town council, I can hear America's issue to adopt a resolution for conveyance of easement on a town-owned real property to the state of Connecticut. This is for the beacons. The state of Connecticut responded with the deed, and this needs a town meeting to approve.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? This is a follow up from our prior meeting where we discussed the placement of those traffic features. Thank you.
The general question for the public, so in order to have these beacons, the state has to own the property there, correct?
That's our understanding, that we need to enter into a certain agreement regarding those small piece, the small piece of property in order.
Square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We legally have to then the property in order to have these.
Correct.
Beacons.
Well, we also have to have town meeting, and they're ready to vote by.
Yes.
But anyway, Councilmember Mauer?
Just as a clarification, we have to grant them an easement on the property and on the property itself. So if she's giving them the right to do this on the property, we still own the property.
It seems such a simple thing for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're a prattic red cape head. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-070, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero. Moving on to item F, which is a call for a town meeting. I move the town council adopt resolution 25-071. Resolve that pursuant to chapter nine, section one of the charter of the town of Monroe, town council hereby calls a town meeting to be warned and held on June 9, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Monroe Town Council chambers of the Monroe Town Hall to consider and act upon the following entitled resolution, and that the town clerk cause notice of such meeting be posted and published in accordance with law. Number one, veins of easement upon town-owned real property, which is 228 Pepper Street to the state of Connecticut. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Selectman, any discussion on this?
None, sir.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from any of our members? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-071, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero. Before we move on to.
Okay, I got you on the phone.
Oh.
There's a question on one of the contracts for the paving.
We're going to move back to new business, item A, resolution.
Mr. Lito? There's a question about the paving contract and CHRO. Do you want to, what's the best way to do this, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we can put him on speakerphone, and we will.
Okay.
Believe that Councilmember Kohut had a question, so we'll have our, all right. So Frank, can you hear me? All right. So Councilmember Kohut had a question regarding the CHRO exemption waiver, and I'm going to pass the phone down to her, and so that she can, since she would like to talk to you during the massive playoff game.
Is that what I heard?
Softball.
No, no, just. Here in anyway, Frank. So the question, Attorney Lito, is relative to the CHRO exemption referenced in the contract for state-funded street paving municipal public works. There's a certificate that is referenced, and apparently, it is confirmation in writing. So I'm just looking for clarification on what that exemption might be.
So with any state-funded contract, CHRO has certain contractual provisions and a process that you have to go through, a public bidding process, you have to submit the bidding process to them, get a certain language in your advertisement, certain language in your bids, certain language in your contracts, certain requirements where they have to approve certain contractors based upon minority representation, hiring subcontract. And there's a litany that we go through generally with any state-funded project. With respect to road paving, which every town gets from the state of Connecticut as an implant, they created a few years ago a limited exemption, and that limited exemption allows more flexibility for the towns, not to have to go through that cost, the increased cost of that process. And so it's a limited exemption where if the contractor certifies that they're not hiring subcontractors, they're completing the project themselves, 100% themselves, which we have by virtue of our contract measures experienced Coachola. And it's using state funds for road, road paving within the town under $2 million, then you're, you can have this exemption. We've included the language in, there's other language, nondiscrimination language, prevailing wage language.
I saw that.
Language. All that language is in the contract, so I comply with limited exemption. And in fact, honestly, I use all our language, no matter what, even though I don't have to. We use the language that's in our standard RFP that applies to any state-funded project. I always put that in the contract that is included in this contract. So we've gone over, what's the schedule for?
My concern was the compliance exemption, and yes, I did note that you included all the other language in the contract. I thank you very much for calling from the game.
Absolutely. Happy to help. Anything else?
Just one second. Anything else from our other members? No, thanks, Frank.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
That's my member Mauer.
Only that, based off of that information, and also in the time that we've had since then, I was able to actually look up the statutory exemption on Connecticut's website. So the, there's, to be, to have this limited exemption, there's four criteria that must be met. The contract has to be municipal public works contract for the performance of street paving work only. The contract must be financed or financially assisted in whole or in part by the state of Connecticut. It has to be completed before June 30, 2025, and then the actions identified in what's part three below of this statutory aspect have to be completed. And that is what Frank was describing, is that section three, where we have to have all of the nondiscrimination language and everything within the contract, and that has to exist within the contract. So, and just if anybody wants the reference, it's conjunct statute, section 46A, 56B.
And Councilmember Mauer? Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor of adopting resolution 25-066, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero. That's it for new business. There are no unfinished matters of unfinished business. There are no unfinished matters of new business. There is no second public participation. I am adjourned this meeting at 7:50 PM. I will see everyone June 9. Thank you, everyone.